Call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2017 Pulse Falls City Council meeting. We'll note that all council members, with the exception of Councilman Borders, are present and Lynn is excused tonight. A couple announcements. Pulse Falls Community Blood Drive is next Tuesday, June 13th, from 2 until 4:45 PM at the Pulse Falls Chamber of Commerce. That's not a lot of time, so get there and drain quickly, I think, because it's only a couple hours. You can schedule an appointment at Pulse Falls Chamber or online at www.inbc saves.org. The Chamber's annual Pulse Falls Open Golf Tournament is Friday, June 16th, at the Lynx Golf Course in Pulse Falls. Register online at www.pulsefallschamber.com. The Park Department was busy last week decorating Spokane Street with beautiful hanging flower baskets, and we had called citizen concern that the plants were not being watered. And rest assured that staff has been out and they are being watered properly, so thank you for your interest. Please remember that for your safety, Kamelum Park Beach and Boat Launch are closed. A Vista will notify the city once the dam gates are closed, and the Boat Launch and Beach Swimming area can be open for the season. And please note that the next city council meeting has been rescheduled from Tuesday, June 20th, a day earlier, Monday, June 19th, at 6 o'clock here at City Hall. There will not be a workshop prior to that meeting. One thing I, additional thing I will mention is we do have one public hearing tonight on a budget amendment, and if anyone wishes to speak, forms are in the back, you can fill it out and turn it into our city clerk. This time, it is my pleasure to introduce the new Director of Cootney County Airport, Director Stephen Kiergard. Stephen, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson's council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself and extend an opportunity if anyone ever would like to speak with me. I handed out some business cards to you all to basically have a conversation if anyone would ever like to, and also give you a little update that we are in the process of our master plan. I have spoken with Mayor Jacobson and Shelley about this, and we are moving forward with that. So you can expect to hear some news, and we'll be hosting actually some open houses so that people can be a part of the master plan as we come forward in the next few months and the next about year and a half. So it will be an interesting time for the airport, so we want to have, make sure we have as much community involvement this time around as possible. And I will stand before any questions.
I'd just like to thank you, Stephen. When Shelley and I met with you and Cootney County Commissioner Chairman Mark Eberlin, you've assured us that the city will be invited to the table, will be involved in plans going forward, and we do appreciate being included in that. So the airport's a very important part of economic growth and development in Cootney County, so we appreciate your inclusion, including us in that discussion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion of, or questions, Stephen?
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, will you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the May 16th, 2017 City Council meeting. Item B is minutes from the May 22nd, 2017 City Council Workshop. Item C is payables, May 9th through May 29th, 2017. Item D is the investment broker-dealer agreement with Morton Capital Markets. Item E is master development agreement for the cottages at Tolemore File Number S-17-03. F is Platt for Country Meadows First Edition Subdivision. Item G is compact pickup truck purchased by Water Reclamation Division. And item H is the April cash and investment report.
Shelley, I have one question. On the investment broker-dealer agreement, when you read through it, I know the gentleman that we're going to be using at that firm has been handling our accounts. And I've got to assume, but I'm going to ask the question, has due diligence been done on the strength of the firm? And, you know, we've got significant amount of dollars invested, and what have we done other than the fact that we've dealt with this gentleman before?
Mayor, that's a good question. I have looked into the company that we, that he has transitioned to. The reason I was wanting to transition was we had some accounts with the prior broker-dealer. They had went through some significant staff layoffs, and we weren't getting the customer service that we needed. There were some additional monies that, that were with that broker, so I felt it was necessary to have somebody that knows our accounts, knows our policy, knows, knows the industry, what we can and can invest in as a municipality. And asked him, we had been in discussions for several months before, decided to transition those funds from the current, to where he's, where he's currently at with his new Morton.
Jason, could you come back to us at a future meeting, give it some time, and just let us know how things are going?
Oh, absolutely.
I would assume again that it's probably fine, gentleman's probably fine, the firm's probably fine. But when we're dealing with that type of dollar amount, it would be nice to know that.
Sure. And we do have, we do use another company where we, at one point in time, the city had went out for RFP, and the majority of our investments are with the one that had, was the winning bidder. We just have some additional funds, they're putting them all with that one agency to move them, spread them a little further.
Thank you, I appreciate your oversight on that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the consent calendar? Thanks, Jason. Without it, entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item up is public hearings, and tonight we do have one public hearing, as I mentioned, on the fiscal year 2017 Budget Amendment Number Two. Jason will be presenting, with that I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second budget amendment for the fiscal year 17, and we have a few items in here I outlined in your memo, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to ask any questions after reading that, because it was a fairly lengthy memo of discussion. Of the items we're going to talk about, there's two funds that are be, I'm asking for amending to. One's the general fund, and you'll see where the Water Reclamation Fund will, also I'm asking for, to amend the fiscal year 17 budget on that one as well. This is just the summary of. The first one is the information systems. With the expansion of all the city, the software that the city has, our current IT specialist finding it difficult to know all about the systems that they currently have, so we're asking for one FTE of a software support specialist in finance, who I'm looking to transition the utility billing processing for past due notices in-house. We've had so many new utility accounts that makes it difficult for us to fold stuff and make it the mail on time, so our current utility billing customer, company that we use, we can outsource that and also get a bulk postage rate by sending the past due notices out. In the Parks Department, we're looking at the Highlands landscaping of the city entered an agreement, and that would be $35,000. Engineering's requesting a full-time employee of engineering technician for $73,469. Also, an engineering services contract with JUB for $30,000. Engineering is also asking for a building inspector of a full-time employee with benefits at $78,195. A permit coordinator, another full-time position of $74,093. This permit coordinator will be the, we had talked about for customer service of having a one-stop connection for your project to see what is, where you're, where you're currently at in the process. We'll go down to the Capitol, the animal shelter, even though the Police Department is only requesting $179,004 from the general fund, I have to budget the full amount of the animal shelter, shelter project. They have used some, they have some money that was donated for, to be used of animal control, and so they're going to use the, the difference between what they're asking for general fund, what the wastewater department is going to contribute, and their donations, but I still have to budget the full amount of the $571,000. And then also the, there's a community development block grant that was awarded, but the funds had to come through the city and be dispersed by the city, so we're just the pass-through since they were state funds, so this is a housekeeping item of the grantee was able to fulfill their obligation. The city received the funds, the city dispersed the funds, so I just need to make sure that we have it budgeted for in the general fund. So the general fund total is $1,509,000. Excuse me. Then we get to the other side where the Water Reclamation Fund, there's two pieces to this, is currently where the animal control shelter is at, that they want to contribute $212,000 for the new facility. That's what the, they've deemed the tenant improvements that the animal shelter has had at that current facility, they wanted to donate or contribute to the, the new facility, so the value that they have determined is $212,000. And then also the Water Reclamation wants to have a seasonal worker, and that'd be $13,685. So the total for Water Reclamation is $225,685.
Couple questions, Jason. Shelley, both whomever. Engineering, the positions in engineering, planning departments were positions that were cut back several years ago, and we just have not brought those positions back on, back online despite the growth in permits and the growth in businesses the city has experienced, is that correct?
That's correct. So we're still one planning person below where we were at the levels of 2008, and those positions are being budgeted for by additional fees that we're receiving during the year. So that's the revenue that's paying for those positions.
And then on the animal shelter, I got a couple concerns, questions. The $212,000 that there, you referenced are contributing, that's what, is that for the land and the tenant improvements? Is that what those values were determined to be over at the wastewater plant?
It's just the building.
Just the building, yeah.
Just the building itself.
And that's part of, within the wastewater master plan, they had in their projects for additional administrative offices and I think lab testing, and so it's coming out of that budget.
So that building will be utilized?
Yes.
For the wastewater department?
Yes.
Right.
And the, I think another question I have, and I think I know what the answer's going to be, but the total cost of the shelter seems to be extremely large. Isn't that because of what we're required to go through as far as the bidding process and building process, et cetera?
I believe that is so, that is correct, yes.
And, and the chief did share with me that there were a couple of things that they thought they were going to be able to hopefully come in under on, when they went out to bid on that, and so this is, this is the highest possible scenario.
It just seemed like when we talked about it before, it was because of requirements forbidding, et cetera. I think Al had a couple of questions, too.
I do. I guess I'm confused a little bit. One, this is a second budget adjustment?
Yeah, budget amendment, uh huh.
Can you explain that one first? Why we're doing it twice? Why we didn't see it the first time?
That's a good question. The first one we had, we were using just some additional rollover funds from the prior fiscal year that either the project wasn't completed, or that we had, we talked about that we had some additional funds to fund some unfunded projects that were on the last budget cycle in 17, so we're using the carryover dollars. This is what we had looked at for the second budget amendment, is what we were looking at. We have additional funds from permit fees, but we also have additional needs downstairs in engineering, so we have the, we have the building inspector, the permit coordinator, the engineering tech, and the engineering services contract. At that time, we were looking at how to use, how to, how to make the permit process a little smoother, so we talked about it at staff meeting, that they could use some additional staff downstairs to make that process smoother.
When we brought forward the first budget amendment, in that memo, we included that we were going to have a second one coming forward. We were going through and comparing ourselves to Cord Lane, to Spokane Valley, and some of the other processes, I'm sorry, other cities that have permit processes to try to determine what was the best process for the city of Pulse Falls to have, and that's why this is coming back at this time. As soon as we had those positions, we've actually started advertising for them in hopes that this will be approved, because we desperately need those individuals downstairs. And, and one more, sorry. It is not uncommon for us to have two to three budget amendments in a year. That's, that's been our normal process.
Go ahead. I guess the other thing that concerns me is, where's the justification for these positions? I mean, basically what you're, what I'm feeling is you're saying, well, we got some extra money, so we want to do this. Versus, we have this work that needs to be done, so this is how we, and we have the money, so now we want to fund it. I look at permits, permits pulled this year are less than the permits pulled last year, and we've talked about why that is. So it's kind of like, did we miss the boat? How did we get all the work done last time? And then I guess the next question is, especially with FTE, what do we do when the cycle slows down and we've got too many people? And these are, these are expensive positions.
Expensive positions, yeah.
I mean, I guess that would be my other question, is are we prepared to lay these people off as the cycle goes the other direction?
And the mayor and I had that very franked conversation, because I didn't want to hire these positions originally, and I was resistant to having them added to the FTEs over the last year during fiscal year 16. I tried to, we, we met with JUB, we tried to contract things out, we've tried other, we've even tried the personnel. What's the name of that, Teresa? I can't remember.
Express Personnel.
Express Personnel and hiring people through there, and there are issues with, they can't sign off on anything then because of the liability. They also don't have those kind of skilled individuals that do plan reviews.
Shelley, we also use some of the engineering staff in that who are moonlighting from the other cities?
Yes, we, and we continue to using, right now, we're using from Cord Lane, their staff. They moonlight over here, and then we try to assist over there as we can. So we've, we've tried as best we can not to have to hire staff, but the permits, even though they're less on the building side, for the number of single-family that are being built right now, we still have, the number of apartments are up, the number of site plan reviews are up, so the, the staff is still needed. And we're trying to increase the time, or decrease the amount of time it takes for plan reviews. That's the other thing, last year that we struggled with, is we were not getting the reviews done in a timely fashion for the developers, so that they could meet timelines in regards to construction. And yes, we will.
Those all sound like great reasons.
We, sorry, and I had the discussion that when things fall down and things are reduced and numbers of permits coming in, that yes, these positions are likely to have to be reviewed as to whether or not to lay them off.
I guess that's what I'm coming back to, is that, from my perspective anyway, I would like to see that when we're asked to approve a budget amendment like this, you know, $1.2 million. I'm not, I guess I'm just not satisfied with the fact that we have the money to spend this year right now. I'd like to be able to see some of the stuff that you're talking about, that there's this many more permits, or that, you know, we're going to be able to reduce the permitting time, and I'm not talking about, you know, super micromanagement down to, you know, counting minutes and stuff like that, but just some explanation that speaks to, you know, why are we doing this?
Okay. Russ and I can work with Jason to put something together. Definitely.
The intent has been to try to outsource, contract out, so we don't have to bring people on board.
Right, you know, I get that, I mean, I, that's just, I would like to see that, I guess, as part of the report.
Included in the packet, yeah, definitely.
You know, what are we going to give, what are we going to give up? You know, like the temporary personnel and stuff like that, that we'll be able to gain with this. Seems like when we decided to make the change to the electrical and plumbing inspectors, the information that was provided at that time was more comprehensive in terms of, you know, what this guy was going to do, and then now we're looking at four or five different people, and it's like.
There's justification?
Yeah.
Got you. Okay. Is that it all?
Yeah.
Joe?
You give me two.
So your question's okay, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Just on the other side of that coin. Back in, I think, I think it was '08 or '07 when we laid off eight full-time positions, right? Is that right?
Yes.
Some kind of, around there. And then, like Al says, I mean, the, the market turned and we didn't need as many people, and I think the city was very prudent, and it's always hard to lay people off. I don't, I don't know exactly how many days your permitting, permitting process takes, but if you listen out there in the industry, it's a while. So when, when you say that it's holding up the developers, I, I think that's probably true. What I was thinking about when I saw these positions is the, a little bit different feel in the market out there, where a lot of things are sort of on an historic wheel a little bit, you know, you expect the market to go up for a certain amount of years, you expect it to go down. I think, look at the broader picture here, and if you, you might compare permits from last year to this year, but how about going back to '06 and '07 and look at the permits and then compare them to today, because I do do that. I always ask the lady that sends the permits out to give me that data back, back in those years. So I guess, because I was thinking about it too, Al, you know, we're, we're going to hire all these people, then if you start even look forward a little bit from that, look at the jobs that are coming here. I just sat through Jobs Plus this morning, and Cootney Health was there in explaining how many more jobs they're going to have in Phase Two and all these people, and I just don't really see the cycle of a downturn on the horizon. And that's just a personal feeling, just, you know, based on meetings that you go to, but.
That's good to know.
That's how I was justifying it anyway, so.
But I think the big question, or the answer to the big question is, yes, if things change and we have excess people, and I think that's, Shelley and staff have proven that, take the steps necessary to do what's right.
And we will put together a further detailed information explanation. Russ, Jason, and I'll meet on that this week and get something out to council.
That'd be awesome, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
I guess if I'm the only one that needs to know that?
No, I don't think so. If you have that question, you know, citizens have that same question, so, you know, what it, it's a teaching moment for us just to ensure that we are getting all the information to you, to know also if we have someone else who's picking up the packet, they can pick it up and understand why we have these additional positions being added to the city.
We just don't take the time to ask the same questions as you do if you've already asked.
Okay, cool, I'll just, let's go.
And that's the exact question, I raised my hand to answer, so you're not the only one with that question.
All right, good.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Jason. With that, do we have any wishing to testify?
I think we have one.
Thank you.
Not wishing to speak, but is neutral towards it, Bob Flowers, is that correct?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at it wrong, Bob. Yes, I apologize. That's what I looked at you, I go, why would you have turned in a form to say you're neutral? Come on up, Bob.
It's April Fool's Day.
I saw it, and I think I was looking at the wrong, without my glasses, because I just, double checked and didn't see it right. So Bob, thank you very much. Name for the record, please.
Bob Flowers. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. What Mr. Wolf, I think, was referring to is what we used to have to fill out, called a cash expenditure request, where we had to basically justify, if you gave us X amount of money, this is how it would benefit the company. If we did nothing, then this is how it would happen. And it's a good practice to get into, to, anytime you're dealing with this type of money. Anyway, I went over this memo that Jason sent to you folks, and I have no problems with these positions. I guess my problem basically started last year when we had to take 3% Oregon taxes. We had to take a 3% raise in taxes. Now, part of that was for the streetlights, and it hurt all of you, I know you didn't want to do it, but then suddenly, lo and behold, we find $700,000 out of nowhere, and it pops up there. Each year, for several years now, we have been, our water reclamation has been going up, double-digit figures. Well, now, for some reason, these folks seem to have an extra $212,000 to give away to help build a, a dog pound. Well, I'm sorry, but I think that this dog facility, or however you want to chase, we need to really look at that and say, do we really need it right now? The budget negotiation's coming up here real soon, the budget talks. It's practically around the corner. Maybe budget it for next year, but put it in the budget, and all this extra money that seems to be floating around, well, maybe we can actually not raise the, the water fees again this year, because I know it's scheduled to go up again. And maybe we can actually not raise taxes again. But to spend money just because you have it right now, I think is, is not a wise thing to do, because I know that Linda knows the real estate market real well, but I'm still gun-shy from what happened in '07 and '08, and you could be, you could need that money. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Bob. There is no more public comment? Shelley or Jason, any response back to any Bob's comments?
Just that the $212,000 is part of the budget for those lab facilities, and so that building is going to be used as a lab facility. It's actually going to cost us less money than if we would have built that building brand-new, so.
So that was in the overall wastewater management plan?
Yes.
That was actually included in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. But Bob, thanks for your comments, I appreciate where you're coming from.
I'm sorry, we'll identify that within our memo also, more clear.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, it's up to you. Anybody want to jump in with comment?
Well, I guess I'll go back to what I was saying earlier. I'd, I'd rather table it right now until I can see more of that justification. I'm not, I'm not ready to vote yea for the budget amendment until I've had a chance to digest that.
Is there any motion to come forward?
What would that require? Just postpone it until time's certain, or?
No.
So the ordinance would be next, at the next meeting, so we can bring the ordinance back and you can make your decision at that point, we can bring additional information. This is the required public hearing to allow people to come comment, so there's no official final action that's taken at this point tonight. Essentially, what we're looking for is direction of the council, what you would like to see when we bring it back to you in two weeks, minus a day.
I'd like to see what Alan described.
So if I had to come up with a motion that would help you, it would be for the council to make a motion for a staff to bring back additional information to the next council meeting, along with an ordinance, and it may be discussed and approved or not approved at that time.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. We'll look forward to receiving that information.
Thanks for your help on that, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Next up is unfinished business, and tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issues. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you wish to testify, please come forward, give your name for the record, and we'll give you a few minutes to address it. Chief?
Good evening, I've got a couple pieces of good news.
This is Chief Merritt.
The Fire District Chief Merritt. And the first one is, I'd like to introduce our new deputy chief, and that is going to be Dan Ryan. Come on up, Dan. We went through a promotional process last week, and, and I've appointed Dan effective Friday, June 9th, this is to replace Deputy Chief Aaron Jones, who retired in February, so I'd like to introduce you Deputy Chief Dan Ryan.
Welcome. Thank you.
I'd say Dan is an old salt at these meetings, but that might come across negative, so welcome back.
Yeah.
It's all right, Mayor.
Yeah, and, and you've seen Dan here at so many meetings, he's been with the district for over 30 years. He just has a calm leadership style, he gets the job done, and I know that I'm looking forward to working with Dan very, very closely, so we're, I'm thrilled that Dan's on, continues on our management team, and we look forward to great things. on our management team, and we look forward to great things from Chief Ryan, so, and that's why I'm here tonight, usually it's just one of us, so... Do you want to say anything? It's up to you.
I don't think you'll see much different from me as far as the city goes. I'm honored to have this opportunity and look forward to the challenges that we all face and kind of exciting times for the area.
Thank you very much. Harry's got a question.
I have a question. I thought you already were deputy chief.
Well, I was division chief, and terms get, especially in the fire service, the terms get bounced around, and a lot of people get confused what the differences are, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I already had you in that exalted position.
Well, that's all right, so you had a premonition of what was to come.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Shannon.
And then the second piece of good news is, we're on track to open up Fire Station Number Two on or about July 1st. We've been undergoing a remodel, so we'll be staffing that station seven by 24, it should start Saturday, July 1st, right in there, about 8:00 in the morning, and so we currently have an academy with six new hires. We'll be recognizing Chief Ryan and the six new hires, and nine other promotions that are as a result of opening this fire station. So we're thrilled about the opportunity to extend and improve the service to the west side of Post Falls and the greater Cootney County Fire and Rescue area as we open this fire station, so I just wanted to give you that. We'll let you know, we're looking for an open house probably on, we're targeting right now Saturday, August 5th, where we can kind of intro the station to the entire community. We'll be extending the invitation as we meet and try to plan that event to the mayor and the city council and the police department, to hope that we, that you can join us, because we're gonna continue with the police substation at Station Two, and we think that's a better way to, to serve the city as well. So thanks for your time and giving me this opportunity.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. I have a question.
Chief, is that the one out by Woodbridge?
Yes, it is.
That's okay.
Yeah, that was a volunteer station for many years, and we've had to use it on a couple different times when fire stations had to be remodeled, or something occurred where we had to move the staff out there, that was traditionally done by the volunteers, so, and our volunteer program sunsetted on April 1st of 2014. This last year, in our budget process, we added the new firefighters and accounted for the increase in costs, and we're doing good, so we're thrilled that this is gonna happen. It's gonna be a great day for Post Falls and Cootney Fire and Rescue. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks, Chief.
Yes, my name is William Guy, I live on Guy Road, and I'm here to comment on the city closing Guy Road. We were never notified about anything. We seen a surveyor up on the railroad tracks one day, and we stopped and asked him what he was doing, and he says, "They're gonna rip out this crossing and close your street." I says, "They are?" Where, I says, "Where do you come from?" He said, "I'm with the Idaho State Highway Department Engineering." So I goes in there, to their office, and I talk to the guy upstairs, as soon as I tell him what I'm there for, he says, "Don't blame us for that, that's the city of Post Falls that's doing that." And they have to, they got something to do with the financing of it or something, I don't know why they're involved, but he says, "It's the city of Post Falls that's ripping out your street." And we were, whoever's doing this down here never had decency to send us any letters or anything. We were supposed to wake up some morning and see them up there ripping out our crossing and telling us to go out through whiskey flats. Now, they, I don't think it's right, and I think it's gonna be a detriment to all of us that live on Guy Road. 12 years ago, I ran over my five-year-old grandson with a farm tractor, and I needed an ambulance, and I needed it now. I didn't need one that had to go to Prairie Avenue and pick a trail back through a housing development to get to my house. I needed one that could come down Grange Avenue and turn on Guy and be there. And all winter long, I hear, "Dig out your fire hydrants, seconds count when you need a fire truck, when your house is on fire." Whoever's closing our street is not adding seconds, they're adding minutes to the time it'll take to get us a fire truck. And it's just not right that they can come in there. Now, this development, John DeVries put that development in there, and the way I understand it is, when I want to put a development in, I gotta draw a picture and get it surveyed and draw out the streets, and I bring it into the planning and zoning, and they okay it, never after everybody's had their say about it, then they bring it to you guys, and I guess you're the final word whether it goes through or not. Well, this guy, whoever's doing this thing, this development is in the city, and he decides to change it. There's no meeting, he moves the property line out into the middle of the street, and no meeting, no nothing, saying they're gonna redesign this development, he just does it. We've been getting these little maps from you guys about these meetings, and the property line is in the middle of the street, and he just ups and gives away a public street to two different private parties. No meeting, no abandon the street, no nothing. In Court Lane, right now, there's some guy wants to abandon the right, or the shoulder of Appleway by Lowe's, a big meeting, the guy, everybody comes in and gives their appointment. Hayden Lake Viking Construction wants to do away with a part of a street in there, big meeting, add in the paper, everything. In Post Falls, this guy just does it. He just gives away the street, and nobody gets to say anything about whether they think it's right or wrong, it's just done, and I don't know what kind of power this guy's got, maybe he's above all you people, but I thought you people run the city, and you were the final say on what went on. But evidently, I contacted two different council members, one of them couldn't believe what I was telling them, that this Post Falls city's gonna tear out our street. "No, they can't do that, the city can't do that." No, evidently, they checked in, found out the city can do that. The other council member I talked to looked into it and came back and told me, "I'm only one marble in the bag, there's nothing I can do about it." You people are all the marbles in the bag, and I feel it's time that somebody stepped up and looked out for the people. I've lived on Guy Road for over 50 years, and that's been the direct route to our homes all those years. And just because somebody is developing a piece of property and making a million dollars off of it, doesn't mean that we should have to suffer for it. And I think somebody needs to step up and put a stop to this guy tearing out our railroad crossing and doing away with our street. And if they don't want to do anything with Guy Road, just leave it alone, let us use it. But I can't see why they, they're gonna put a gated crossing on Grange, put a couple of blinking red lights on Guy Road and hook them up to the same switch that shuts the gates on Grange. And we've lived there since 55, and we've never picked a fight with that train, and we don't intend to start now. And then I hear this thing that, "Oh, the crossings are too close together. You got a million-ton train coming through there at 40 miles an hour, I don't think that train cares how cross, close those crossings are together, it don't make a bit of difference to him. He's just praying that everybody stops as he goes through." And what is this, how can crossings be too close together for a train, you know? But then you got the people complaining, "Oh, well, we get rid of Guy Road, he'll have to honk his horn three times less." Well, when those people bought those homes along the railroad tracks, did they think those was covered wagon tracks? What did they think those were? There were trains gonna go through there. We learnt that when we bought that place in 55. The trains are gonna be going through there, and, and I think it's kind of cool, I think there's nothing more powerful than a train to watch it go by, and, and the only time that horn bothers me is when I'm trying to convince a jove of witness to get out of my driveway, and he can't hear me.
Mr. Guy, your, your time's up, but, not to put staff on the spot, but can we get an update or report back in the next meeting, because number one, I've never heard the city giving away or allowing anybody to give away a city street. Doesn't happen, can't happen. So if there's circumstances that are involved, I think as a group, we would love to know what they are, because I know any time the city's gonna abandon a piece of property, it's gotta go to public hearing, et cetera. So we'll get an update, we'll have them bring that information back to us, and someone, Bill or Russ, if someone would be in touch with Mr. Guy, I would appreciate it. So someone would be in contact.
Yeah, I've got those little maps you've been sending out, and it shows the property line right in the middle of Guy Road.
We'll be in contact.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Mayor, I have a, I have a question, too.
The city wouldn't determine a closing of a railroad crossing?
No, I wouldn't, I would assume not.
Well, this came up, we talked about that subdivision, and the fact that we were gonna abandon that crossing, I just assumed that anybody that was going to be affected by it would know about it.
Typically, they would be notified, so that's why I've asked if they can bring us back the information, give us an update, tell us what's transpired. Okay. Thank you. Next item up, anybody else, first of all? I think not. Next item up, new business, state revolving fund loan closeout. Ms. Danielle Quaid, Bond Counsel, Holly Troxell presenting. Welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, so you have before you, in your next section, the supplemental ordinance related to the DEQ bond for the wastewater project that has been completed by the city. I just wanted to take a little bit of time and walk you through that supplemental ordinance and answer any questions that you have. I think you should have it in front of you, but I was kind of walking through some of the material provisions. If you start in the whereas clauses, it gives you a little bit of the history, most of you were on the council during this whole process, you'll remember. But we went and sought a judicial validation on this project to get authority to borrow the funds without a vote back in 2013. Subsequent to that, we worked with DEQ and entered into a loan agreement whereby the funds were borrowed and then through a drawdown process, and the project was constructed. So you're currently in a DEQ loan agreement, which was originally in the amount of $8 million, and subsequently amended to increase to $10,836,000, which is where we are right now. So this adoption of the supplemental ordinance allows you to actually issue the bond, this project has been completed, the full drawdown has been completed, all of DEQ's requirements have been completed, and what's left to do right now is just to document this loan and issue the actual bond, which is held by DEQ until the debt is repaid. The, you'll recall that we, in, last year in 2016, when we refinanced your prior wastewater bonds, we issued a master ordinance, and that master ordinance governs all of your wastewater debt. So any time you issue wastewater debt, it's going to be issued on parity, so each bond issue will have the same pledge. So this is gonna be the second bond issue on, on parity with the prior bonds issued in 2016, and we contemplated them when we issued the 2016 bonds, because we were already in this process with DEQ for these bonds. One thing I did want to note, that unlike the 2016 bonds, DEQ does require a reserve account, so there will be a reserve account created for these bonds. The way that it's funded is that for the first 10 years, the payment you make to DEQ includes a 10%, it's, you basically pay 110% of the payment, and that 10% accumulates to equal the one payment, which is then held in an account, it's actually held by the city, and then it'll be used to make your very last payment on the bonds. The bonds that we marketed last year, that requirement was not there, the market is no longer requiring a reserve, but the DEQ interest rate is so good that it makes it worth it to hold those funds.
Danielle, what is the rate? 2.2 something?
Oh, I should know right off the top of my...
2.25.
2.25.
There you go.
So the reserve is just that one payment?
Right, so it accumulates over 10 years, you don't have to fund it upfront, which is nice, but yes, then it'll be utilized to pay the last payment on the bonds. These bonds are subject to optional redemption. In the marketplace, typically, there's a 10-year no-call on bonds, so you, for the first 10 years, you can't really call them without funding an escrow to defees the bonds over that period, but here, you can call and pay them off at any time. I don't expect that you're gonna get a rate better than 2.25, but stranger things have happened in this market in the last 15 years. So like your other bonds, these bonds are secured by a net pledge of, of your wastewater fees. So basically, you take all the fees that you receive, you pay your O and M costs, because everybody recognizes that you don't get more fees if you don't keep operating the system, right? People want, want their wastewater service in their homes, that's what this is for, and then after those O and M costs are paid, then everything else is pledged to the bonds on parity with your prior bonds and any additional bonds that you issue under this master ordinance. So I think that's really all I have, very similar to, like I said, your prior bonds, and the, the material terms of this transaction were already approved in the loan agreement back in 2014, so this is just kind of, you know, putting the final stamp on this project and this borrowing.
Any questions for Danielle?
So what's the estimated term on this?
20 years.
20 years.
Pretty good rate for 20 years.
Yeah. Maybe.
The other thing I would note, just for your information, is that another benefit of going with DEQ, as opposed to taking these bonds out to the marketplace, is that these bonds are not tax exempt, you don't have to comply with the IRS's tax exemption requirements, which while beneficial to your interest rate, do create work and burden for your finance director, so you get kind of a secondary benefit, you get a really great rate, a rate equivalent to a tax exempt rate, and you don't have this ongoing compliance that, that comes with a publicly marketed transaction.
So does 2.25 on a non-tax exempt basis change your mind a little bit? That's pretty good. Okay. Thank you, Danielle. Any other questions? So the action coming forward would be in the ordinance envelope.
Thank you.
Speaking of ordinances, tonight we have three ordinances and one resolution. First ordinance is the Kern Zone Change File.
Move to place the ordinance, Kern Zone, Kern Zone Change File, number ZC-17-01, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance, from 2.24 acres of heavy industrial to community commercial services, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance Kern Zone Change File, number ZC-17-01, to direct the clerk to assign that appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next ordinance is the adoption of 2017 electrical code.
Move to place the ordinance, adoption of the 2017 electrical code on its first and only reading by, by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending Section 15.16.010 to adopt the 2017 National Electrical Code as the electrical code for the City of Post Falls, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, adoption of the 2017 electrical code, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next ordinance is a supplemental bond for wastewater loan from DEQ.
Move to place the ordinance supplemental bond for the wastewater loan from DEQ on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes.
A supplemental ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, authorizing issuance and sale of the city's wastewater revenue bonds, Series 2017, in the principal amount of $10,836,000, to provide funds necessary to finance improvements to the city's wastewater system, ratifying and/or approving the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and amendments thereto, providing for the sale of the bond to the State of Idaho Department of Environmental Equality, pledging revenues for payment to 2017 bond, fixing the form and terms of the 2017 bond, creating certain accounts for payment of the 2017 bond, providing for other matters properly relating thereto, and providing for the effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance supplemental bond for wastewater loan from DEQ, to direct Move to approve the ordinance supplemental bond for wastewater loan from DEQ to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we have one resolution.
Move to approve the resolution sole source purchase of an upgrade to the 911 system from Frontier Communications.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is under Administrative Staff Reports, and it's an update on the Arendale Trailer Park water that was brought to our attention at the end of last meeting. Russ Knoll presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson, members of the council. Russ Knoll, Public Services Director. I think I'll just speak to this tonight. The Arendale Trailer Park is located down by the Wave Park, Vista's Wave Park, down off West Lundie Drive, just right by, between the freeway, I-90, and the Spokane River, right next to our Outfall, essentially. So we were contacted in early May by the property owner and their engineering firm to have a meeting and get together and discuss what we were told were some water quality issues with this, with their water system. They have a private water system that they manage themselves. They've had water quality issues, it's my understanding, in talking with DEQ for some time. Those water issues have not gotten better, and so the residents in those areas are having to gain potable water through other means, either bottled water or whatever they may be doing, boiling water. So we got together with the engineering firm. They inquired about extending a city water main to the property. We've taken a look. We have some options for that, and we do have water available. They can bring a line in from down by Falls Park on Fourth, or they can come in from north of the freeway, from Seltice in that location. So we are in support of that. However, the funding for that project would have to be funded by the private development. It is not a city water system that they currently have. In order to provide city water to that area, they would need to fund that project. Their engineering firm has provided us with a draft proposal coming from the Falls Park area. We've provided some comments back around May 19th on that proposal, and we haven't heard anything since. I did talk to DEQ again today, and they also haven't heard anything in the last couple of weeks. So we are in waiting mode, and the point, I think, to make for the city's standpoint is, we are in favor of extending water service to this property. They will have to obviously fund that to service the area.
Russ, this is in the city limits?
This is in the city limits. The trailer park is in the city limits.
So you've got someone living in the city limits, renting property out, and not providing proper water to his tenants.
Correct.
So we make a proposal. We do the engineering work. We come up with a proposal and a cost estimate that would have to be borne by the property owner.
They are doing the engineering work. They're doing the cost estimates, and they're doing all the work.
Property owner?
The property owner, correct. There's no financial burden extending the water main.
The question I was going to ask is, so they do all the work, and they decide it's too expensive, and they don't want to do it. So what do we do if we have citizens in the city of Post Falls who are not getting proper water?
Right now, the issue is between the private property owner and DEQ. They are in violation of not providing potable water to this development.
So again, my question, if that doesn't happen, does DEQ step up, or do these people continue to go without water? It's been an ongoing process, it sounds like.
My understanding is that DEQ at some point would have to step up and issue a final or a formal, more formal violation, and compel them to do something in a time certain. And then they would either have to bring water in, or I would assume abandon the trailer park. It's okay.
Will you keep us posted on that?
Yes.
Because it's just one of those things that, I'll speak for myself, but I would sure hate to see this just continue with no resolution.
Absolutely. We'll keep you informed as we learn more.
I have a question. They're in the city limits. They're on their own well. Are they on septic, or are they hooked up to sewer?
They are on sanitary sewer. So that's good news. But they do not have potable water. They have a couple of different wells. Both wells have not tested positively consistently for some time.
That's been going on for how many years? Oh, my gosh.
That's my question. Would we just let it go forever?
Well, from the time that they got annexed, right? Because it was a county, it was in the county for a long, long time.
Linda, there's two trailer parks, so I think we may, because I was confused also. Shannon had to clarify for me after the last meeting when they came in. There's another one that is in the county that came before council, and the owner did not want to pay to have the water.
I think that's what I was confused.
And so the annexation was denied by council, that we did not annex that particular trailer park in. So there are two different trailer parks.
And I think when that gentleman was here at the last meeting...
Let me show you on the map. I don't have the aerial here on this map, but I do have the property location. This is the Spokane River. These are the Vista Islands in yellow. And the property is here, West Iron and Caboose Court. And this is, the yellow here is county property. So the city boundary is this black line. So they're just inside the city boundary.
Is that Maguire there?
Maguire, yeah. Maguire is...
So the other trailer park that's in the county is on Maguire.
I don't think it's a trailer court. I think those are one-acre pieces over there on Cannon and Lewis and all of that. That's not a trailer court. Those are all individually-owned properties.
No, I'm talking, there's another trailer court, though, that is in the county that came before council, and we denied the annexation.
And I was thinking that was at the east end.
So it's this, basically this property.
Yeah.
This property. There's the trailers now.
By Horse Haven?
Mm-hmm.
Iron Horse.
That's the location.
So you will keep us posted on this?
Yes.
I've run by there all the time.
Any other questions of Russ? Thank you. Thanks, Russ. Appreciate the update. Yep, you're welcome. Next up, some mayor comments. Tonight, I have none, other than schools getting out is out. You can have a bunch of little kids running around. Please drive careful. Watch the speed limit, especially in the residential areas, and know that they will be out there in force. Let's keep all the kids safe. Counsel comments?
I just have one thing, and I drive by the sewer plant, if you will, and you guys did an awesome job landscaping that, and I really appreciate that. It looks like a really nice part of our city and stuff. And I really appreciate that there's not any sculptures of amoebas and stuff like that. But no, you did an awesome job. So I'm glad to have that project done in the books, but good job.
Thank you. Here.
And I just want to say, Dave Ferris here, to you and the cemetery staff, because you always have such extraordinary, it's just such an extraordinary representation every year at the Memorial Day Ceremony on the ground, that looked that way throughout the season as well. But just because you always do it doesn't mean that people don't notice and appreciate it. So we expect such wonderful service out there, but you did a good job. And I'm looking forward to that fountain being up out there. So thank you very much.
Excellent.
We don't take it for granted.
Any other comments? We do not need an executive session tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The next motion is adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.